Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's study session from Mesa City Council for Thursday, April 25, 2013. I'd like to excuse the Vice Mayor, who is out of town and will not be calling in. I guess Councilmember Summers is on his way and will be here late. And we've got both Councilmember Glover and Councilmember Richens that are going to have to leave early, so we're going to have to take that, keep that in mind as we go through our presentations today. I'm sorry. This is true. Well, I guess they could. That could create a tad bit of difficulty.
We'll move quickly.
Okay. First item on the agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the following department budgets. And it's too bad the Vice Mayor isn't here, because I was going to say, "The next chapter in the David Copperfield era," but he's not. David Copperfield, he's a magician, you know, rabbits out of ... forget it. It's too early, Dave. Energy Resources, Mr. McCray.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Frank McCray with the City of Mesa's Energy Resources Department. In the audience with me today is Bill Norton, our Deputy Director, and other members of our staff here. In case I need some help answering questions are Mary Larson, Harry Jones, John Petroff, and Robert Baer. And so with that all, move briskly through our ...
Is anyone back at the store mining it, or are we all here?
There's quite a few. Quite a few. I need all the help I can get, so just in case.
Go right ahead, Frank.
So, since 1917, Mesa's been a unique city in the Valley in that we've provided electric and gas utility services. We're the only city in the Valley that does that. We think it's a proud tradition. One of the things in which we've done recently to try and continue that proud tradition is for the second year in a row, we've won the American Public Power Association's first-place award in their safety award program, so we're very proud of that. Moving into our 2013-14 budget, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of our 2013-14 innovations. Excuse me, I went quite a few slides ahead.
Yeah. Jumped.
Some of our fiscal year '12-'13 innovations that we've been pursuing over the last year, and some of them will roll into this year. Probably the one I wanted to mention most on this slide is the program that we developed with the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation and the city's economic development department. This is a program where we provided vouchers to participants in Netco's business training programs, business support programs. That's allowed Netco to incent participation in those programs, and I think we've gotten a lot of positive compliments from the people, from the businesses, that have been participating in those programs. Going into our 2013-14 budget, we have a couple of innovation programs that we started in '12-'13 that will roll over into this year. One will continue the light rail business retention program. The other one that I wanted to point out on Slide 5 was the proposed compressed natural gas station. This will be part of our CIP funding. Right now, we're in the, still in the feasibility planning stages, probably the late, later part of that stage. We've identified a couple of fleets that are very interested in receiving compressed natural gas service from the City of Mesa, so we're working on that. Most important steps in this process are finding a site. We need to be close to our high-pressure gas distribution system, and we also need to be relatively close to those fleets so that we can minimize their travel time to and from their stations.
Just make merit. And will that be available to public? Will that be a public refueling station?
It should be available. It depends upon the cost of what it takes to extend that service to the public, but ideally, we would have both the islands for the fleet vehicles as well as a public island, much like what Waste Management has at their facility.
Great, thank you.
I also wanted to point out that we're going through a very thorough review with a consultant that Mike Comstock and Solid Waste will talk about in May. We're looking very carefully at what it takes to convert our solid waste fleet to compressed natural gas service, including all of the infrastructure and facility upgrades that will be required in order for solid waste fleet to be converted to compressed natural gas. I did it again. Our new innovations, I wanted to focus on the electric undergrounding. This would be CIP bond-funded. We learned quite a deal about what it takes to convert an overhead system to an underground system with the Mesa Drive project. It's a very expensive undertaking to build it new. It's even more expensive undertaking to convert an overhead system to an underground system. So the Mesa Drive provides us an opportunity to gain real-time, actual cost data, so that now when we get requests to consider undergrounding, we can move forward with some hard-cost data and not just speculation and research from other utilities. So we're looking forward to move forward with that in 2013-14. This slide is our financial picture. You can see that we've had minimal changes between '12-'13 and the proposed budget for 2013-14. Our labor costs, our personal services costs will be about 2% under budget. Our commodities, which is primarily our electric and gas supply contracts, will be about 7% under budget. In terms of our funding sources, you see a couple of general fund and transportation-restricted sources of funds. Those are primarily to fund our response to locating underground infrastructure on behalf of those departments. The other piece is the allocation of our personnel that work on capital improvement program projects to that particular funding source. We received authorization in 2010 of a little short of $16 million, and we will be spending that by the, by 2014, early 2014. Recently, the funds proceeds have been used to continue the conversion of our distribution system from 4 KV to 12 KV. And this slide on Slide 9, this map on Slide 9, you can see that portion of our system that's been converted from 4 KV to 12 KV since about 2009, and here's the remaining circuits that we have, about 7.5 megawatts, which is a little less than 10% of our system remaining. This is a project that was started about 20-plus years ago, so it's been a long project. We've greatly accelerated the pace at which we've been making these circuit conversions, so we should be done in 2013-14, excuse me. One of the things that we saw with the conversion, which was also provided us a significant opportunity to upgrade the resilience of our system, is the number of service interruptions has declined significantly since 2009. So that was one of the unexpected benefits that we have accrued as a part of the conversion Again, talking a little bit about the conversion from overhead to underground, the Mesa Drive project provided us some opportunities to really gain that. That was between Southern, from Southern to Eighth Avenue, removed the overhead distribution equipment, and we installed the conduit and wire. Also, six residents along Mesa Drive were converted to underground service. We'll be hopefully completing the removal of the pole and any of the telecommunications wire up on the poles this month.
Yeah, Councilman Higgins?
Thanks. Really quickly, do you cost that out, like, per mile? How much does it cost to redo? Because someone asked me, I don't know, so I'd ask while you're here.
It depends upon what's the nature of the existing system. The general rule of thumb is on a new basis, it's six to 10 times more expensive to go underground than it is to go overhead.
Okay.
For a conversion, it's probably a minimum of 10 times higher, because you're taking an overhead system that's existing and converting it to underground. So it, on a per-foot basis, I'd have to give you some more detail. It depends upon the type. If it's backyard conversions to front service underground, then it's probably a lot less cost.
And is that line like two feet under the ground? How far under is electrical? Just so everybody knows, don't go digging for a reason.
Right. I think our minimum depth is 24 inches. Depending upon what's the other infrastructure in the vicinity, we'll sometimes go below that.
Okay. Yeah, let me know. I'd love to know that number, it'd be great. Thanks.
We'll bring that to you.
What is your, you mentioned backyard to front yard. What, if there's a priority, or do you prioritize? Is it existing front, maybe arterial or collector? Is that higher priority, or is it backyard to front yard, higher priority, or does it depend?
We haven't set a priority yet. We're looking for some guidance on that over time. In most instances, it's an aesthetics issue. And so with Mesa Drive, it was a priority that was given to us by the city manager's office that says this is an area that we want ...
Oh, you're going to blame, you're going to blame Verity, huh?
We're following the direction of the city council through the city manager. The clear direction from the city council.
Here's about five things I could say. I'm not going to say any of them. I'm going to refrain.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think you've done enough damage to yourself.
In that case, we were, it worked out well, because we combined it with a major project. We're already going to be in there.
That's the Mesa Drive.
And that really, and I think we've been able to, when we identified those types of projects within the Mesa Electric Service Area, that's where we've worked to try to address that. And I think Mesa Drive was one of the largest sections we've done.
Which means, let's say, we're digging up the street, we're putting in other pipes, we're, there's already a traffic barricades up, so it's a good time to go in and do two or three things at the same time. Councilman Richens?
Yeah, you know, there's a few, it's not just about aesthetics, too, I think. You know, when you replace it, you get all brand-new transformers and wire and infrastructure, and those, you know, things do need upgrading pretty regularly. The other thing is it kind of hardens that infrastructure against natural disaster and copper theft. It's a lot harder when it's a couple of feet underground to do it than when it's hanging on a wire overhead, so it's, there's some definite benefits to that. Thanks.
To kind of conclude the response to your question, it'll be about also how many customers are willing to request it and perhaps participating in the funding of it. There are costs that are, that we incurred on the Mesa Drive project that were on behalf of the customer and the equipment and infrastructure that's on their residence. And so we would need to figure out how to portion that out between what's the city's electric utility responsibility is, what kind of contribution we would seek from the customers as well.
And of course, whenever there's new development on there, as long as it's not a major, major line, we, the development includes going underground generally, if there's new development.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
The map on Slide 12 provides an indication of how much of our system is overhead currently and how much is underground. About 60% of our system is underground, so there's a lot of opportunities where we can convert to underground, but it's not going to be a short-term project. It will be a long-term project that will take probably many years to complete, given the cost issues.
Yeah, and once again, those major transmission lines are not going to go underground. And those are what, generally? Like, running down University, the transmission line south? What's their capacity?
Well, that, the capacity of those lines is 69,000 volts.
69, okay, so those are 69 KV, and those aren't going underground any time in the future.
I would suggest that we not unless there's some pretty extenuating circumstances that would justify it.
Right.
It's basically a brand-new system as well. We've rebuilt that entire system within the last five years.
But I mean, generally, we're looking at 12 KV systems as going underground, our distribution system as opposed to our transmission syst, I don't know the difference, the technical term, but the input, the major trunk lines, or however, whatever you call them, as opposed to our neighborhood distribution systems and the spoke going out, the 12 KV lines.
Right. Our 12 KV distribution lines, which is obviously a lower level than our 69 KV, so we bring power through and around the city at 69 KV, we put it into a substation, it drops the voltage down to 12 KV, and then that hits a further set of transformers that drops the voltage so it can be used at the residence.
And underground, our priorities are 12 KV, putting those in there, not the 69 KV.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
So, Slide 13, the projects I would want to point out of what we will use the remaining funding from the 2010 authorization for us to complete the 4 KV to 12 KV conversion, which will be in 2013-14. We've also seen a significant increase in the request for new and upgraded services from our existing and new customers. So we haven't had sufficient funds to, in our budget, to meet those requirements, so we're looking to increase our CIP budgets for that group. We think that's a really good sign that our system is growing. We're bringing in new customers. New customers are coming. We think that that trend will continue and hopefully increase with transit-oriented development as the light rail hopefully brings in some new development. We've also supplemented what we fund our CIP with, not just bonds, but we've also used other sources of funds. One of our innovations in '12-'13 was the mobile emergency electric generators that we purchased in collaboration with the fire department. We've used non-bond sources for that purchase. We've also are working with Metro and their contractor for the light rail to install some underground infrastructure in advance of when the customers will be there, but that will greatly decrease the cost of going in later, and it will also increase the timeliness of which we can extend service and enhance service to new developments or redevelopments along Main Street. So we're using a lot of our non-bond sources for that work. Our planned projects, which will need new authorization, will be, again, services for new and upgraded, upgraded services to expanding customers, existing customers. We'd like to start on the undergrounding project and expansion of our underground distribution system and overhead conversions. And then, as we've gone through the 12 KV replacement, conversion, starting 20-plus years ago, there's actually some older 12 KV equipment that's going to be needing to be replaced in the near term. So we would also use bond funding for those types of conversions, for those types of replacements, excuse me. We'll transition to the gas program, CIP. In 2010, we received voter approval for about $48.5 million of bonds. A large part of the funds have been used on joint projects with transportation, water, and wastewater. Mesa Drive and Southern was such a project. We've used those funds to enhance our system when we're also doing a replacement project. The Mesa Drive and Southern project included 21,500 linear feet of intermediate pressure and high-pressure main, and that was started in March of 2012. Another couple of examples of where we're meeting the needs of new customers or expanding our service to meet the needs of expanding customers was the high-pressure main that we extended to Waste Management's operation in the southeast part of the valley. 9,200 feet of high-pressure steel main and a regulator station were installed. They're greatly expanding their CNG-fueled waste vehicle fleet, and they will soon become probably our second-largest customer. As Councilwoman Higgins and I discussed, they also have a public station there at Waste Management. You can see a picture of that at the bottom, bottom picture on Slide 19. One of our other exciting projects this past year was expanding a high-pressure main to the Banner Desert facility to provide them enough gas for them to convert to a cogeneration system. Cogeneration is the simultaneous production of heat or thermal energy and electricity, so this greatly enhances the efficiency of their HVAC and water heating systems at the Banner Desert Facility campus. Slide 21 indicates what we will continue to use our 2010 authorization for. I'd like to point out the service for expanding in new customers. We have a difficult time forecasting the real estate market, as an example. In the first eight months of this fiscal year, we've had 676 new residential customers connected to our system. In all of '11-'12, we had 635 new residential. These were difficult to put on our radar screen soon enough to be able to identify it as a, as a specific project in our CIP, so we have to have the flexibility of having a line item for unspecified, yet fairly certain that we're going to have new developments arise. We'll also spend the remainder of our 2010 authorization on joint system replacement projects and rehabilitation projects. So we should, we're expecting to be, have spent our 48.4 million authorization by the spring of 2015. So projects that we would need new authorizations for are a series of high-pressure and intermediate pressure projects. Again, many of these are part of joint system rehabilitation projects with other departments that service to new and expanding customers and meters. And if things work out well on the west side CNG, we'd like to think about funding other CNG stations on the north-to-northeast part of our service area for gas, as well as maybe Magma and the south-central areas. With that, I'd like to say that we can't do this by ourselves. The support of the council and the city manager's office has been invaluable, but there's several departments that we also work very closely with that I'd like to think we couldn't do what we do without their help. That's engineering, water resources, information technology, the communications department, economic development, the city attorney's office, budget, business services, financial services, and fleet. We couldn't do what we do without their help and support, so we greatly appreciate their efforts.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Next is water resources.
Mayor, council, you guys all know me, and I think at this point you guys also know our assistant director, Susan Miller, our deputy directors, Jake West and Alicia Solano. I had an ulterior motive for bringing them up here today, and that is to announce that Susan Miller is going to be retiring from our department, and I was hoping you would join me in thanking her for her many years of service to the City of Mesa. Okay, so just a quick reminder for you guys and for our viewers on Channel 11. We do treat and reliably deliver high-quality water to homes and businesses in our community. We also safely remove their wastes. We reclaim that water and use it as a future supply, and we reclaim it also to protect the environment. It's my job to also remind you that, you know, we're the unseen utility. Our pipes are underground, our facilities are mostly behind fortified walls, but we do provide the foundation for economic development, public health, and quality of life in our community. No matter what you're doing in Mesa, building a business, building a home, you're going to need clean water and you're going to need the safe removal of your wastes. We ascribe to a framework called Effective Utility Management, which I can assure you is better than ineffective utility management. And really, this is something that some really great minds in the industry and some great agencies kind of across the country came together about 10, 15 years ago, and kind of posed the question of, well, what does effective utility management really mean? And how can we better define that? And how do we measure it? And one of the main tenets behind this framework is that you can't have just one of these. You really need to have all of them in order for your utility to be well-managed. Our strategic business plan follows these tenants. If you need some light reading at bedtime, you can find that online at our website. So, but today I'm going to focus on three things, really, ensuring reliable service, enabling economic opportunity, and operating efficiently. So here we go. So, really, if I had to condense the presentation down into just one slide, this would, this would probably be it. You can see that we benchmark very well compared to other local utilities. One of our strategies is to optimize chemical use, miles driven, water losses, energy demands. And optimize is important. You don't want to minimize, because there are certain standards that you need to meet, but we keep a very close track of these things. We also insist on performance metrics and benchmarkings in each of our activity groups, and they have to report those, that performance monthly against the strategic goals and also their benchmarking. Another way to examine our efficiency is to look at the number of employees that we employ. You can see that we also benchmark very well here. You can't really tell from this slide, but we're actually lower than that, that other blue line that's relatively low. In our department, we do set a very high standard for accountability. We make sure that our employees are working on their A-list, not their C-list. But unfortunately, even though we are operating very efficiently, there are some pressure points, and these are important ones that will affect our budget next year and in future years as well. You can see from the chart on the top right-hand side of the slide that we track our energy usage very closely. It's one of our strategic plan goals, is to use less energy at our wastewater treatment plants year over year. You can see that we do a pretty good job meeting that. That's the purple line, but the blue line indicates cost, and you can see that regardless of the, the great gains that we've made, our energy costs do continue to increase. And we expect, long-term, that that trend will continue. And that will put pressure on our budget. We also try to keep a closed control over our chemical costs. This is a little trickier, because our chemical usage can really vary with the quality of the water that comes into the canal system, and we don't have a lot of control over that. We are seeing pressure in the cost of chemicals as well. Also, we've been using more chemical in our wastewater collection system to make sure that we're controlling odors, and that, that's a relatively expensive chemical. The forecast that you guys have seen, that Candace has been showing you, the forecast of our finances and costs and potential rates over time, does include increase in cost for electric and chemical. However, another pressure point for us is the cost of CIP water, and that is increasing. It's expected to increase an additional half million this year. That is over and above the forecast that you have seen this, to date, and we're thinking that after this fiscal year, the, it will increase about $1 million, at least. We don't know for sure yet. The CIP board has yet to take action on their rates, but we're anticipating this to be the case.
And that has nothing to do with the Navajo Generating Station?
You know, it does. What, what did it, but there's kind of, there's kind of two issues at the Navajo Generating Station. In the past, the CIP would pump water into Lake Pleasant during the winter months when energy rates are relatively low, and then they would sell their excess entitlement during the summer and make some money off of that, about $25 million a year. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, because the cost of natural gas has been so low, they haven't been able to resell that energy, and they've lost about 20, they've lost those revenues to the tune of about $25 million a year. So that's really the pressure point that we're seeing right now. There are additional, additional pressure points that we'll see in the future, as there are some additional environmental requirements at NGS.
Councilman Richens?
Yeah, I would suggest modeling your budget dramatically. The million may be low. So you might want to consider, and I'd love to see a couple of scenarios where we could be looking at million to $5 million increases, because depending on the decision that's made about Navajo and how, because they only use a third, a third of the power or so from Navajo, depending on what happens there, those costs may very quickly get passed on to the M&amp;I users of cap water, so.
Absolutely, councilmember. And, and let me say to that point, that the half million for next fiscal year that we anticipate, the additional increase, and then the $1 million thereafter, that's just for the loss in revenue that they're experiencing, not being able to resell their energy on the market. So we don't really know what the additional cost increase will be as the new environmental regulations come down.
Let me ask you something, and I'm trying to remember my water bill. You know, with, with electrical and gas, we have these cost adjusters. I don't, we don't have anything built into our water rates for those, because generally it's, there's, there aren't commodities that fluctuate like we do with natural gas and with electrical, where we have to buy.
That's correct, Mayor. And also, compared to electric and gas, they tend to be a relatively smaller portion of our cost.
Now, this, you know, I'm assuming we'll have a, a longer time period to adjust to this, but let's say something happened mid-year. Let's say the EPA went through and did something with Navajo, and CIP was, you know, increased prices or whatever. Do we have the ability to adjust, or would you have to come back to us for a rate increase to cover maybe any kind of substantial thing? Or do we have plenty of time to anticipate that?
Right. It kind of depends on what the CWCD board decides to do. For example, these last couple of years, the loss of $25 million a year in revenue, they've taken that out of their reserves, which are, which are very healthy reserves. Their reserves stood at over $200 million, and they chose to take that out of reserves. They now want to replenish those reserves. So what it would really come down to, Mayor, is were something to come down that imposed tremendous cost on the, on the board, they would have to decide how much of that they would take out of their fund balance, out of their reserves.
So they have the ability to soften, to soften that. I'm assuming we could ease into that, because ... that because even with Navajo, it's not going to be shut down or done something tomorrow.
Right.
That's going to be phased in over several years.
Right.
So, I'm assuming we'd have plenty of time to look at that and could build that into our annual, annual rates in anticipation of.
That's what we would hope. And certainly that's what we would ask of the CWCD board as well.
Councilwoman Higgins? All righty.
Okay. All right. So, on to ensuring reliable service. So, as you know, we do a lot of water and sewer line maintenance and replacement. Jake can talk to you a little bit about this. We target pipes with basically the worst in our system. Jake, do you want to talk a little bit about our program?
Yes. Basically, our program is, it's pretty much, it's not different from the last time we came here for the 2010 authorization. We try to target the pipes that we know are the oldest and we have a history of breaks in that area. We had a history of breaks on Main Street, which is why we did the Main Street project. Plus, there was the neighborhood over there by the Mesa Country Club where we had significant breaks in shorter periods of time. So, we've targeted those areas for replacement and that's the basis of our program for the replacements and rehabs. We also have a line item in our current authorization where we try to annually, because certain areas just pop up and all of a sudden we can have continuous breaks in a more localized area. So, we have funds there that we can identify, then work with engineering, design that and then hope to construct the next year to limit the losses, plus the impending claims for those types of things, so.
Mayor, do we have a, like, what's our plan for, I guess, cleaning the collection system? Do we like go through the whole system every five years or seven or four? I think last time you said you target certain areas more often because they're problematic, but...
Yeah, we do have a program where we have identified trouble spots where we have things in the system that just, or there's large grease areas where we have, so we have those as trouble spots. We currently are cleaning up that list. We went from about 60 to about 40 in the last few years. So, those are ongoing and they spring up from time to time where we may see some issues. We also have an annual program where we try to get about 16, 30 miles cleaned each month. And that's just cleaning. And along with the cleaning, we also do the CCTV. And then we also have a contractor that comes in and does our, that's mostly for the pipes in the neighborhoods, smaller than 12-inch. And then we have a contractor that does our 15 inches and larger. And we target those by many areas, but we try to look at the critical pipes, the large diameter pipes or the pipes that are near schools, hospitals, things that where we can't afford to lose that part of the system. So, we have an annual program where we clean and inspect our sewer system regularly.
And councilwoman, this is an area where the work groups also provide monthly metrics to Jake so that he can see their progress and make sure they're on track. And we know Jake is doing a great job because of these two charts that really tell us where we are. Our pipeline breaks are significantly lower than the national average. Now, in fairness, we're, you know, comparing ourselves to some utilities back east and whatnot that are a lot older and have weather conditions to deal with. But nonetheless, it's pretty good.
I will tell you, you know, one of the big issues that I deal with, with other mayors and conference mayors is water systems.
Yeah.
And I, you know, especially in the Midwest and the East, it amazes me how they have entire systems that are at risk. And the only thing I can look at is that they have not undertaken over the last several decades an aggressive program of renewal and revitalization and it's caught up with them. And, yeah, and they want the federal government to step in and bail them out. And I, my one question is, is, you know, because as I'm talking to them, I'm trying to understand how a system could get so out of date. The only thing I can think of is that they refuse to plan and include in their, in their rate structure a program for exactly what you're talking about. So, I laud the city for what we've done over the years, even though we have a relatively young system, but we're older than, you know, Gilbert and Chandler and those places which have, you know, 20-year systems. We have a 50, 60-year system or a little bit older in some places, but not much because we've been aggressive and we have included and unapologetically included in our rate structure a very aggressive capital portion that keeps our system up to date and safe. And I think we reap the benefits of that. So, there are cities that, yes, they live in, they're in cold climates and everything, but I will tell you that it amazes me how many city systems do not keep up like we do. And so, I applaud your efforts.
Well, thank you, mayor. And we thank you for your support. And you'll notice on this slide that some of our projects, you know, are included in existing bond authorization, but we will need additional bond authorization moving forward to complete others. Okay. Another big part of ensuring reliable service is making sure that we have adequate wells and that we have redundancy for drought and canal outages. So, we have an extensive program for our wells as well in terms of rehabilitation and new well development. I'm going to have Susan talk just a little bit, I think maybe that guy works over there. Have her talk a little bit about some of what our staff has been doing related to City Well 26 and some of the arsenic remediation there because it's pretty innovative and we've managed to save a lot of money using in-house staff and expertise rather than outside staff.
Okay. As many of you may have remembered from over the years, one of the problems with the groundwater wells that we have in Mesa is that when the new regulation for arsenic lowered the MCL, we were on the border, just on the cusp with several wells of if the standard is 10 and we have a well at 8, it can also go up to 10 over time. I mean, it's nothing that we're doing, it's just naturally occurring arsenic. We had a well that is a very important well for us because it's the only well that pumps directly into our Brooks Reservoir, which is between Dobson and north of Broadway, which is a 10-million gallon reservoir. And when Val Vista goes offline, we have wells pumping into the system and into these reservoirs so that we can continue to provide water for the city of Mesa, pretty much the city zone, which is the broad zone that we're sitting in right now. This Well 26 was on the cusp of meeting the arsenic and just in the last year, it did go over. So, we will be taking that well offline and we're under the gun because we have another Val Vista outage coming up next fall. So, we had our in-house staff look at ways of providing treatment for that well using equipment that we have at some of our other wells that are not as critical. So, we had a well that we had some arsenic treatment and media at that they evaluated the remaining useful life of the media and the equipment and will be moving that equipment and media over to this well before the Val Vista dry up next fall so that by quickly addressing the arsenic issue and that and using existing equipment, we think we'll be saving about one and a half, 1.8 million dollars.
You guys are familiar with this next project. We've talked about it several times. It is a very large project, so I want to keep bringing it to your attention. We'll be replacing the large transmission main that brings treated water from the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant down to our three main reservoirs in West Mesa. It is our largest transmission line in West Mesa. The first phase of that is in our existing authorization, but future phases will require additional authorization. Another issue that we face when it comes to ensuring reliable service is making sure that we have enough people, enough skilled people, enough experienced people to do the jobs that we need them to do. You guys know that we're, we have an aging workforce. There is a limited pool of skilled workers, a limited pool of experienced workers. And I can tell you that all the utility managers here in the valley, we meet quarterly and we talk about this every quarter and we're all trying to figure out which employees we can steal from each other. It's just, it's a relatively small pool of people who know how to run a wastewater treatment plant, a water plant, these types of complicated systems. In addition to that...
Don't even replace it. I got it.
Councilwoman Higgins?
But this is a good point to, you can soapbox to tell parents, to tell their kids, there are always going to be jobs in this.
Oh, absolutely.
Gateway Community College has a great program. We've been talking with EVIT to see about picking that up for wastewater and water treatment operators because it really is a, the mayor said a crappy job, but that is so professional.
I would never say anything like that.
But it's an excellent job with good job security and it's not as gross as you may think. So, you know.
Right. Yes, thank you.
So, no, it really, so it's, I don't, anyway.
Problem is, when you get ready to retire, you can say you had a wasted career.
Oh. It's a, mayor, and, councilwoman Higgins, thank you. It is, it's a great career.
Wait till you start talking cemeteries. Then I got a whole, I got a whole stand-up to do on that one. Go ahead.
So, one of the things that we did do, we are working with Gateway Community College. We developed an interim program for the plants so that we can help mentor some young students and bring them along so that they get their certifications, they get the experience they need, so that they are then ready to move into these careers. So, enabling opportunity, you guys, we've also talked several times about the new water lines in Southeast Mesa, how they will improve pressure for existing customers, but also enable expansion at Gateway, at ASU Poly. We're also developing new groundwater collection lines so that we have some drought redundancy or canal outage redundancy. Many of these projects do require additional authorization. We've also talked about the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. The basis of design has been finished, but we still have design and construction ahead of us. That's about a $90 million plant, so it's very expensive, but it is necessary to provide further economic development in Southeast Mesa. Also, it does provide source treatment redundancy for the entire eastern service area.
Now, what, I know we've talked about this almost every year as far as the timing on this. What, what do you see now? Because we've put it off because of the slowdown in development out there. And I think if things would have kept up like they are, we'd probably have to have it almost right now, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
But now we put that off. What, in the horizon, what do you foresee as the timeframe on that? Two years from now, four years from now?
No, a little further out. We've, we've put design in for fiscal years 16, 17, and 17, 18. And then we've put construction in for fiscal years 18, 19, and 19, 20. So, potentially, and it does depend on growth, potentially it will not show up in the next bond authorization. Well, design would, but construction would then be in potentially the.
If we're going, I mean, I know on revenue, every four years or so, so next year would be the next revisiting.
Mayor, one of the things we will, we're going to do, and we're going to bring to council, we've the forecast for utilities. We're not going to do that today, but we know we need to bring that to council. I think we've got it scheduled here in a couple weeks. One of the things we're trying to do with that forecast is we know we have huge purchase, or huge project like the sitting out there, just out, kind of, just outside the page of our forecasted, that column, but we know it's there. So, we're really trying to build our system so that there's not a shock in the system as far as rates, as far as a big project like that. So, we're, we're trying to find ways to deal with that, knowing that's going to come up, even if it's not going to happen for the next, would you say, six years?
Yeah.
Or so. But we know we need to start planning and thinking about that now. So, we'll bring to council some ideas we have, maybe even if it's, have, set aside of, you know, some of those dollars before we actually get to that date. So, we have some, we're going through a lot of different scenarios because what we don't want to happen is this, in the six years, seven, eight years from now, you know, we have this huge rate shock to absorb something like this. Now, what we're hoping, as we're timing this too, is that we're going to see more accounts grow into the system. And that's what's driving this. So, ultimately, that'll help smooth some of that out.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're playing a real balancing act here because you don't want to build a plant and have significant excess capacity.
Right.
On the other hand, you can't afford to be under capacity.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know how you do that. I would assume that we're not going to get to a critical point that we're, and then build this and play catch-up, that we're going to try and stay.
And there's the lead time, just to put this in place too, that we have to be sent. So, it's both, like you said, it's the timing of the demand, but it's all, also understand you can't just overnight build a plant like that.
Yeah, this is a three, four-year project.
Yeah. The good news is we have the land. The land's, we have control of the land. If we can get design going, then what is it, how long for construction? Is it two years? A year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, realistically, you know, even if we started, six years from now, it's still eight years out. But we need to make sure if we don't have, you know, if things really take off out at Eastmark and Proving Grounds area, we may have to move it up a little sooner. But right now, we feel comfortable where we are.
Okay.
Okay. The other big dog out there, of course, is the expansion of the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. This also enables growth in Southeast Mesa. It does also provide additional Colorado River water through exchange with the Gila River Indian Community, which benefits the entire service area. So, some of the...
What's the share of that?
In the Greenfield plant. Right now, we own four MGD. Queen Creek owns four and Gilbert owns eight or nine?
Eight.
Eight.
Okay. So, our expansion is also dependent on them or how does, how do we do that?
Right, mayor. So, we've been talking with Gilbert's staff.
If I do the math right, that's 25%.
Correct. So, we, so we've been talking with Gilbert's staff about the timing of their needs as well. They are, they tell us that they're experiencing pretty strong growth. Right now, our timelines for expansion coincide, which is great because certainly you don't want to do it in off years. But we continue to have those conversations with them and make sure that we're on the same page.
I guess what I'm saying is, do all three of us have to show up if we're going to expand?
Queen Creek probably doesn't have to, but they've indicated to us that they would like to participate anyway because there's such economies of scale of doing it all at the same time.
So, the expansion is basically just, just expanding the available throughput?
Yes.
So, if we want to go from four to six, we could technically, we could technically add 2 million gallons per day and do that, although it may not be, I know it's not the most economical, most efficient way to do it. We could technically add that because it's almost like it's modularized.
It is. You know, you're probably, if you're, if you're going to go through...
I have to work on it modularized.
Yeah, modularized. If you're going to go through the expense of it, you're...
I get that.
Probably going to do more, but yeah.
No, I get that. But I just want to make, I want to see if we get a critical need and the other two aren't ready for that.
Right.
Do we have the ability to add necessary capacity without them? I get that we would prefer that all three of us expand at the same time because it's cheaper and that kind of thing, on a, on a, on a unit basis.
Absolutely.
It's cheaper.
Yeah. But no, we do have the, we do have the ability to move forward without the partners.
All right. That's what I want to get to. Okay.
And again, construction here does require additional authorization. We're looking at design coming up actually relatively soon in fiscal year 14, 15, and 15, 16, and then construction thereafter. We're looking at about $60 million and change for an eight MGD liquids treatment expansion. So, bottom line, we do operate efficiently, but costs are increasing and we're going to need to spend some money. We're going to need to build some pretty major infrastructure. We're going to have to rehabilitate some pretty major infrastructure. This is our budget slide. You'll see that we are looking at an increase in our budget. About half of this is included in the financial forecast that you have seen. Actually, I'm sorry, nearly all of it is. We are proposing an increase for the CAP commodity that you haven't seen on the financial forecast. And we're also proposing to use some of our basically pay-as-you-go funds for some one-time repairs that need to be done over the, over the next year, so. Okay. And I think Candace already talked to you about this a couple of weeks ago, but our remaining authorization in water is 28.6 million wastewater, about 50 million. We want to throw out there just for consideration, potential 2014 authorization needs of about $130 million for water and close to 100 million for wastewater.
Councilwoman Higgins?
Catherine, is that, those plan needs over what period of time? Five years?
Yeah, it varies between utility, but a rough measure is four years. But sometimes you can make the authorization last a little bit longer depending on the price at which your projects are coming.
The projects I'm writing would be...
It's about four years.
Just like it was...
So, for 2014 authorization, these would be projects that would take us into early 2020?
2018, 2019.
15.
Yeah.
So, we would, yeah, 15 to 19, more or less, that time period, because this would be probably election in November. So, it'd be 15 to 19. It's just, again, we did in 2010, we did, we did the utilities. And so, 2014, then we, we did, completed that four-year program. We had 2014. And we've built this into the forecast that we showed the council. We anticipate that about every four to five years, we would need to keep investing the capital into the enterprises. So, you'll see that, we've already kind of anticipated that. We have a CIP that goes, you know, out probably 10, 10 years. And so, we've already built into the assumption the smoothing of those bonds throughout that same period of time.
Thank you.
Well, theoretically, and at some point in time when we do that, I'd like to look at the, I know we're going to throw out the overall bond load, but theoretically, you put in, we bond for two reasons. One is to replace existing equipment, the other is to expand capacity. Is that right?
Correct.
So, I would assume if, if in a perfect... So I would assume, if, if in a perfect world, that we're not continuing to fund equipment or capital items, pipes or whatever, that are no longer being used. So you'd assume that your bond, that your debt level would remain constant if all you were doing was replacing. That your debt, your debt level would remain fairly constant. Now, that doesn't take into account increase in construction costs, things like that, which may cause a little bit of an up or down. So I'd, I'd like to look at the replacement portion of the bond as opposed to the capacity. There's no doubt, for example, that the Greenfield Plant and the Signal Butte Plant are capacity issues. They're not replacing any existing plants, they're adding to capacity. So if we could, as we go down the bonds, separate, as best you can, separate those two, so we can see what, what is going to replace exist, keep us up to date, and what is going to plan for the future.
Absolutely, Mayor. And in fact, just to give you kind of a rough idea, over the next, say, four, five years, in the water utility, we're looking at about 60% of our projects being replacement projects, the cost for it, and about 40% being expansion and growth. In wastewater, it's the opposite. It's about 70% expansion and growth and about 30% rehabilitation.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason I want to look at this is that what we do is we talk a lot in here, and we have elections for new debt, new debt, new debt, new debt. And there's never any big celebration when we retire or pay off.
Right.
Or extinguish old debt. And so all it seems like we're doing is adding new debt. And I think that information will give us a real sense of where we are in the overall scheme as to how debt relates to existing facilities and expansion facilities.
Absolutely.
That make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And Mayor, and just, and we, we'll pull the schedule out again, but there is a schedule that we've provided that shows the debt service schedule with even the new debt, and it's a pretty flat line.
Yeah, I know, I know we look in, we, we've got numbers in total, in totality. I'd like it sort of like broken down, like those are the numbers you're talking about.
Right.
The percentage that's going to replace and the percentage that's going to, and that, that just helps put it a little bit more in perspective.
Absolutely.
All right, because the most numbers we've got are just the total.
Right, right. But by maintaining it flat, it also suggests things are being paid off, but we can show that.
It suggests, but I'd like to, you know, if we could see that, then that would just narrow it down and show that that's what's happening.
Okay.
No problem, we can do that.
Because, you know, the conversation is, we, we had a bond election in '08, '10, '12. Now we're looking at one perhaps this year.
Yeah, right.
Then next year. And, you know, I want to get information out there so that, that the perception that all we're doing is adding new debt is really put in context of our overall program.
Absolutely.
So we're paying off debt.
We're paying off debt, we're replacing equipment.
Right.
We're doing this. And then there's, there's no doubt that there's some things that are, that are expansion mode, and there's other things where we've paid off debt. You know, in our parks, we're replacing now in improving parks where the debt, my guess, was paid off 10, 15 years ago. Because the parks haven't been upgraded in 30 years.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, just to put it into context, so as we go out and we explain to people, and as Councilman for Higgins says, you get questions from constituents, their perception and all they read is new debt, new debt, new debt. We never talk about the old debt.
Right.
And what we're doing with that.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is transportation.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Dan Clevenger with the Transportation Department. With me are my two deputies, Alan Sanderson and Lenny Hume. Probably don't have to tell you, I have a lot of work going out on the streets right now. I've heard either directly or indirectly from all of you. It's a very busy time for transportation engineering and our partners in utilities as well. So there's a lot of work and with more projects to come. If I could, I'd like to just start out with some of our innovations, or innovations with impact as they've been called. Talk briefly about the My Mesa Smartphone App. This is not a new project for us or program, but we have made considerable additions to it. It started out with graffiti only, so citizens can report graffiti, take a picture, get a location sent it into us, and it's automatically sent to a contractor, and they do a great job for us, eradicating graffiti. Since then though, we've also added the ability for citizens and staff frankly, to report illegal dumps, sidewalk defects, signing, street lighting, et cetera. And then very recently, solid waste and code compliance got on board as well to join us in allowing just another way for citizens to easily report problems, have them taken care of. This started out, a lot of the use was city staff would take pictures and to document, have things taken care of. It's grown in the, in the public sector here, a lot of citizens are taking advantage of this as well. And now we've got about a 50-50 split between staff using this and, and the public. This is just a quick graph of the My Mesa Reports, the smartphone app. This shows transportation only. You'll see a spike, this is, shows the last 12 months. You'll see a spike in October, that was the Make a Difference Day. We had a lot of folks participating in that. But since then, we've continued to have about 2,000 reports a month on the phone, and we see that probably going to continue to grow.
Showing that, Mayor?
Councilwoman Higgins?
Is that your department handles all those things that come in, or does that go to neighborhood services?
Code compliance will get theirs, solid waste will get theirs, and we handle the, the transportation issues.
So there's.
I'm sorry?
Got it.
The graffiti goes to the contractor. Everything else related to the streets will go to our office, and it gets distributed to our staff to take care of.
So that's everybody's using the My Mesa App, or?
Is this all everybody's?
The graph you're showing right now is streets only.
Wow.
So.
Okay.
The, the columns go higher as solid waste and code compliance catches on and that becomes more popular, so.
Wow, that's great. Is that, is it helpful?
Oh, it's great, yeah. We've, it's been a very great addition to what we do. It's getting very popular. I know some of the council members are using it as well.
Great.
You're a good customer. Some other innovations we have, we talked, I think, last year about our asphalt mix designs. One of the, Lenny, you can help me if I miss something here, but we're using more rubber in our mixes. Previously, we used a, a crumb rubber, or chunks that would be in the mix, and now we're using more of. You could see, you could think of it as a, a liquid maybe, or, you know, melted. And it's, it's a more homogeneous mixture. And so what that does for us, it's, it's a more durable pavement. It stays black longer, and it requires less maintenance. So, and last year alone, we were able to keep over 38,000 tires from going to a landfill. Next year, we anticipate using probably over 100,000 tires in our streets. In addition to that, our pavement management system, we, we bought a new software system called MicroPaver this year. We're working, and this is a bit of a challenge, we're getting some help from our IT department. We have 27 years worth of data we're loading into there on our street system. And it's going to allow us to do better forecasting and a better lifecycle analysis. Heard a little bit about our Bike Share Program already. That's something, might be a little ambitious, but we're hoping to kick this off by the end of 2013. It's going to provide some on-demand loaner bikes along the light rail corridor and in a couple additional sites. We recently, was there a question?
I have a question on that. Is, I was talking to a gentleman from Phoenix that said that you guys are working on a regional system for that. Can you talk a little bit about?
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Higgins, we're, Phoenix got started just a little bit ahead of us on this, and they're looking at some options. I don't know exactly how theirs is going to be funded and what it's going to look like. For me, the ideal system would be regional, and would connect all the cities. So a bike trip starting in Mesa could end, could be a one-way trip, end in Phoenix, and we could, we could keep track of the bikes and make sure that they're redistributed so that they're available in all the different stations. One of our concerns is if, you know, if Phoenix moves forward with a different method, a different model, we'd, we'd like to, we'd like to very much partner with them to make it seamless. But it might be a little bit of a challenge if they do something kind of out of the ordinary. My understanding from Phoenix is that they're looking at something that's completely privately run and funded with very little city involvement. And we wanted to be a little more hands-on and, and make sure this is working well and, and partner with a vendor.
Right, so we're just working, we hope we can resolve that, because it would make sense to have a regional approach. What we've really done with the light rail concept is tied it to many of the nonprofits that are close by, also that need transportation. The idea that if you could, whether it's save the family or New Leaf or get all the other groups we approached, is if they could have access to bikes, then they could actually get from their locations to light rail. And then from light rail, maybe then you have another bike station, and then you can get to a place of work, healthcare, shopping. So that's how we're trying to build a network, so it's not just necessarily a leisure activity, although that could work. We want to see it as kind of that next portion of the whole transit system. So it's not just, you expand the influence of light rail, so it's not just the walking distance, but it's also how far can you ride your bike? A lot, there you go.
Yes.
Right, and so that's kind of how we're trying to broaden it. So we had some, we had some vendors out at our Bike Fest, Bike, yeah. And so they're, they're interested. There's, there's some vendors out there that have some really good approaches, and the costs are really not that significant. As a matter of fact, we've talked to some of the nonprofits about, even for their clientele, you could have cards they could swipe or passes they could use. So you could at least allow those who are looking for employment or need some help in that area to give them some kind of discount, so they can use a real cheap method of transportation to get from a New Leaf, you know, transitional homeless, you know, facility to a light rail station, and from light rail to another part of the valley where they could find employment or other services.
Throughout this month, we've been conducting surveys related to the Bike Share Program. We've heard from, to date, 216 people. A lot of those were collected at the community events, Chris was talking about the Bicycle Festival. What we heard from them so far is they would use these for casual rides connecting to bus light rail and for recreational use. 65% of the people have indicated that they would be willing to pay for the service. And if they had to pay, folks would be interested in a credit debit card transaction, as well as maybe a transit pass. And then on a scale of one to five, four and five being very important, important and very important, we had 63% thought this would be a very important program. So it seems to be quite a bit of support out there. The last item on this page is a Lumen Management System. That's our street lighting system, just trying to, what the system would do is identify individual light malfunctions. It would also let us know when circuits are out, which might indicate a wire theft. And then it would allow us to have dimming capabilities as well, which would save energy. We've been exploring this for a couple of years now. We haven't seen anything. Let me say, there's, there's some, some systems out there that will provide energy savings, but the return on investment isn't good enough now to move forward. So we're going to keep an eye on this. We think there's a possibility in the future we can move forward to something.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Higgins?
Mayor, how is your switching out to your LED streetlights going? Are you still piloting, and if you are, is there areas we can drive around and look?
Mayor, Councilwoman Higgins, we, actually, the, the new Eastmark Project has all LED lights in it, even on the arterial streets and the residential streets. We continue to use them. We haven't switched completely over, it's just one of the tools in the toolbox if a developer wants to use that type of light. If we switch out a light that's a high-pressure sodium, we can't put an LED light on it right now because of the light pattern. So we have to change our spacing a little bit, but we're using more and more. It's not, it's beyond the pilot program, and we actually have them in our system.
Do we put that on our website? Because that's a big deal, you know, when you go to an NLC-type events. The fact that we already are using them in big neighborhoods is, is something that we should celebrate. And the fact that you went through, like even how you went through your trial is, you know, because you did trial or test runs, or how you chose your lighting fixture was, is, is something that you could share with, you know, the rest of the country. Because it was very, what's the word, organized, and you planned out, and you did a really good job at finding something that works in, you know, the climate that we live in, which is difficult.
Thank you. I'll follow up on the website. We do, I've written several journal articles in, in some of the local journals and actually across the nation on how we went through the process, testing, all the things.
Maybe you should see us on those. That's, that's cool stuff, and that's fun to share with people when you, when you, when it comes up in dinnertime conversations. Great, thank you.
That would be called, that's of course when you're having a light dinner.
That's good, I like that.
Very good, Mayor. I'm going to jump into the operational budget. Let me just show you a quick graph here of our, our two funding sources. Blue is our HERF revenues, Highway User Revenue Funds, that's the gas tax and vehicle registrations primarily. And then we have our local street sales tax shown in red. So first column's our actuals, and working with the Budget Office. This is our forecast of what we project to come in, in the future. Quick slide here, this one's pretty simple. Our, our budget frankly for this next year, 13, 14, is virtually identical to 12, 13. What you see in the 12, 13, in the first column, the $50 million includes some carryover from the previous year. The base would have been very similar, about the, the same $44 million or so. So we're staying consistent for the last few years at, at about $44 million. Mayor, so you're looking at that, are there any questions you have?
Yeah, I was looking at, I was looking at the sources.
Okay, yeah, if you look at the sources, the general fund dollars down there are only, are just what we do for other departments, general funded departments, parking lots and things like that. With enterprise funds, that's the, I think, our utility patches we do for our, our utilities. And then the environmental fee is shown down there as well.
Well, break out the transportation. That's, that is the, that's all sales tax, or is there different components in that? Yeah, because I didn't realize we pulled in 38 million from our sales tax. Is that about 20, mid twenties?
Mayor, that's a combination of HERF and sales tax.
Okay.
Yes.
And you may have gone through this before, what's the, about 23, 24 million?
Correct.
From, from the, from the transportation tax?
Yeah, we've got about 22 and a half, so we're getting close to 23.
All right.
Wow, good point.
Okay, good.
All right. Jumping in then to our capital improvement program, like the other departments, what our capital improvement program funds is aging infrastructure, so replacements for that and constructing new facilities. When we look at transportation, our biggest asset obviously is our street network, and that's where we spend most of our capital funds. And like the aging pipes and, and infrastructure in, below the street system, our street network also gets to the end of its useful life at some point, even with proper maintenance. And that useful life on arterial streets is typically 20 to 25 years. So over time, what happens is our streets, the streets dry out, they get brittle, they crack, moisture gets in there, we get potholes, and then we start the cycle over. When we talk about our, our operational and maintenance needs, those are funded with those two funding sources, the HERF and the local sales tax. Our capital construction funding has largely been underfunded, I guess I would say. And historically, before we did the general obligation bonds back in 2008, we were using HERF bonds. So those were, those were done at regular intervals in 96, 2000, 2004. So four-year spacing seemed to work pretty well. We're continuing to pay that debt right now.
What's done in four-year, the overall or the HERF?
The HERF bonds had been.
So 2004 is the last time we've done HERF bonds?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and, and those are for, obviously for projects that are already completed, we're continuing to pay off that debt. More recently though, in 2008, when we did the, the GEO Bonds General Obligation, again, those are backed by a secondary property tax.
Okay, just real quick, let's go back just a little bit. As you mentioned, prior to 2008, 2004, we had HERF bonds, 2000, we had HERF bonds, and 1996.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Because when you said every four years, we haven't, actually haven't done HERF bombs, HERF bombs, HERF bonds for now 13, or nine years.
That's correct.
Four, right, 2004.
All right.
And so now with the, with the GEO Bonds.
You know, I'm sorry, where are we with our HERF funding from the state? I mean, I know there was, I'm not remembering. Did, Scott, did that all get re? How much is that, we still down on that as far as the, their sweep or whatever you want to call it?
Diversion.
Diversion, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, we're, we're back to, well, back to the, the good days where the transfers have been decreased just to the point where DPS is still funded out of HERF, but they're not taking additional transfers beyond that.
So that's stabilized for now?
We, we feel it's pretty stable right now. The governor's budget proposal for this year, the legislature. The governor's budget proposal for this year, the legislature has not put out its own budget. We're only working off the governor's budget at this point and it, it keeps that transfer constant.
By the way, HERF stands for what?
Highway User Revenue Funds.
Okay, thank you. I did.
I wasn't going to point that out, but I'm glad...
Frank started it because Frank used CIP sixteen times without saying capital improvement program. And I was going to ask him to deposit it. So Frank, you get a reprieve because I don't want to have to pay either, so.
Mayor, I would just add that that's likely to be as good as it gets for us. They really...
At least we're stabilized. Now, once again, for those who are unfamiliar, that's gas tax, vehicle registration, what else goes in there?
Myriad of...
That's the bulk of it.
That's the bulk. There's some smaller funds that go into it as well, but that, that makes up the vast majority of it.
All right.
With compressed natural gas, is there a tax that goes to, into the HERF fund as well? Maybe you're...
I'm not sure. We can find, yeah.
You're guessing not.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Higgins, we can find that out. I know there's some smaller buckets that also...
Frank's sitting right back there. Do you recall any revenue source you get?
It's my understanding, we don't get any from HERF now and CNG sales. I don't believe there's any assessment of HERF tax to that.
Okay, not yet.
That's what's advantage.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason why that might be in HERF is that, you know, pipelines and things like that are part of transportation, believe it or not, so, or can be part of transportation. Okay?
Just one more comment on the general obligation bonds. That's allowed us to do the two thousand eight version, if you will, to provide that match for the Prop four hundred or the regional transportation plan projects. And then it also allowed us the leverage to go after some federal funds. And we've gotten millions of dollars in the past few years for street projects, ITS, that's our signal system, and bike and ped projects as well. So that two thousand eight bond authorization was almost a hundred and eleven million dollars. I'd like to talk to you briefly about what we've done with that. Just a few slides with some photos showing some of the projects that are completed. At Gilbert Road and University was our first project. We had capacity improvements, landscaping improvements, and some of the underground and some of the utilities were the largest features. Ray Road provided a starter section that was Sausman to Ellsworth. One lane each direction, had a raised median, bike lanes, additional access to the airport. And of course, it aids future development. Hawes Road had a similar starter section. It was just two lanes that connects two oh two to Ray Road, better airport access and again, going to aid future development. The Greenfield Road improvements, baseline to Southern, provided increased capacity and some safety improvements. Again, a raised landscape median. Had also had a widened bridge in there over the eastern canal. Signal Road improvements out near Elliott Road and First Solar. Capacity improvements, significant drainage improvements, and we extended water lines from the city-owned reservoir. ASU Ring Road, now called Innovation Loop, is a great project out there, created a two-lane road around the rapidly growing ASU Poly campus.
Can you email this to ASU, please?
Yeah, I certainly...
On a daily basis?
Provided...
Remind them?
Also included...
Presentation to them, I got a meeting with them.
Yeah.
I offered to sell it to them, but I didn't get any takers.
Also included...
T-shirts, sell it at ASU.
Also included were water and sewer mains, storm drains and retention basins. The Broadway Road project, Sausman to Hawes is about to start in June. This one's obviously not done yet. Significant drainage improvements, we're going to correct the, remove the inverted crown that was built by the county that allowed storm water to run down the middle of the road, flooding and causing additional damage. And then it's going to install a new storm drain system. So we'll have two lanes each direction there with added capacity at Sausman and Broadway and it will include bike lanes as well. Some additional completed projects, Dobson Road and Guadalupe, that was an RTP, Regional Transportation Plan project, and we did quite a few ITS projects as well. We've got some current projects underway. First three bullets, Mesa Drive and Southern, the Power Road project and Dobson University are underway. The fourth and fifth projects are continuing with design and right-of-way only. That was something we talked about a couple of years ago with council. We would need additional funding for construction and that comes on another slide here.
That's our portion of the construction, since the RTP, since the regional plan?
I'm sorry, Mayor?
That's our portion of the construction.
That's correct.
Okay, because they're, they're in the...
That's correct. We would get reimbursements.
Yeah, you know, acronyms are so much easier sometimes. They're in the transportation improvement plan.
You're coming along.
The tip. No, it took you five years, you almost got me though.
Yes, sir.
Oh my gosh. We were in a, we were in a room at the cybersecurity center and there was this gigantic screen with nothing but federal agencies by their acronyms. There had to have been a hundred agencies there. So we played a game, you know, name the agency, and I could only get like a third of them. It was amazing. But go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation with my travel tales, but go ahead.
I have all day, Mayor.
Yeah, I know.
Some additional non-RTP or Regional Transportation Plan projects that the bond is funding as well, is the Fiesta District improvements on Southern Avenue. Some of our commitments around Riverview, continuing with our rusted streetlight program. You'll remember that we've got about sixty-five hundred rusted, or streetlight poles that are susceptible to rusting. They're direct burials, they don't have a concrete foundation. So we've been replacing about two hundred and twenty of those per year, and so it's an ongoing program. City share, is that, yes, sir?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering who had the bright idea years and years ago. I guess that's how they did it, just bury them directly and...
That's how it was done.
Interesting. Mayor, they still do bury poles out there too. SRT still does.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay. Councilwoman Higgins?
I think every year we bring up, you know, how many streetlights were short in the city. I mean, we have ones that we're replacing, but we're also lacking streetlights to meet current standards. And I'm just kind of curious as to what that number of streetlights we should add to the system and what the cost associated with that might be. Except we're thinking about bond authorizations, one of the things I hear the most from my neighbors in some of the older parts of town is we want more streetlights. And so if we're talking about a bond authorization, I would love it to see, let's look at a robust streetlight addition program and, you know, what kind of energy costs that would add to our system and how much it would cost to add.
Mayor, Councilwoman Riss, and we do have those numbers. We did a couple of years ago, well, back in the two thousand eight bond election, we looked at those same issues, we can pull those numbers back up again. We rarely get questions or requests to remove streetlight poles. We, our list of, it's probably about five pages long, their spot improvements, so...
Right.
I was going to say, we can give him the ones we want to remove out in the desert uplands.
Deal.
Yeah. No, hey, can't we do that?
If you had one in front of my house, it's wrecking my Christmas lights. Maybe I could have a chain, I could just turn it off.
Yeah, I have one on my whole street, so.
That's the dimmer. Dimmer, Greg.
Yeah, we'll step that one up.
The, one additional item on there was the city share program, and that's just additional funding we provide for significant development to finish the street. The developers responsible for twenty-four feet of asphalt, curb gutter sidewalk, portion of streetlights. We would use this funding to finish that half-street of the project beyond the developer's requirement. The ITS stuff, Intelligent Transportation System, that was just some additional work that really addresses incident detection and congestion issues. Here's a project that's going to start up this summer, construction, we've been working on it for a while. It's a Dobson Road, pet and bike project between Broadway and Main. We were able to get full federal funding on this project and we're continuing to acquire easements and right-of-way, I believe, and we'll get that construction started this summer. I believe it'll hopefully wrap up by February of next year.
Yeah, go ahead. Quick comment on design there. There's, I don't know how far along in design we are there. There's some really unique business types in that area. I mean, it's kind of developing in kind of the heartbeat of the Vietnamese community and Pacific Rim. And I don't know if we've looked at, you know, kind of, and I hate to use the word culturally sensitive, but I mean, there's, there's needs there, design elements that could really tie that area together really nicely. And so I would encourage us to think about that, maybe do a little bit of outreach on that and see how we can really create almost a theme in that area that celebrates all that. I mean, some of the Asian-themed businesses there are really super cool and the restaurants and, you know, so maybe we want to think about how we can tie that together with some of the street design.
Thank you. Well, we'll talk with engineering about that. An additional shared use path project is a Porter Park pathway. How's that for alliteration? We've got, that begins basically at Mesa Drive and Eighth Street, runs northeasterly. We had three hundred thousand dollars to do basically design only and got some good news in the last few weeks. We've got an additional one point four million dollars in mag closeout money for this project. So that's going to make our local match, we anticipate, under one hundred thousand dollars for this project. What this project does, it connects three parks and two schools along a corridor that really doesn't look very good right now. This is, and I apologize, I didn't have that on there. I mentioned it starts at Mesa Drive and Eighth Street and runs northeasterly from there.
It's along a...
Just north of our facility building, Eisenhower entry.
Yeah.
There's a little park in there.
And it was a, it was a canal.
Yeah, yeah.
That got buried.
It got buried, yeah.
And so it'll, it'll run between Fitch Park and connect to Porter Park and eventually the Park of the Canals, and then it'll connect Eisenhower and Keno as well. So good project. Just a reminder on the three parks bond projects that were associated with pet and bikes or designs continuing on the first two items, Riverview and then the West Mesa connector that goes along the Country Club there. And then another project in southeast Mesa that we're continuing to look into. Now I'm onto the planned project where additional authorization is needed. I know last week, it might have been FIRE indicated, these are, you know, this is a wish list, so these are our projects, short-term, that we would propose for consideration for some additional funding. I mentioned these earlier, these two projects, that's the construction phase, Southern Avenue and Stapley, as well as Southern Avenue and Country Club. One of our biggest needs is arterial reconstructs. These have been underfunded. Our last significant funding was the ERA funds, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, Mayor. And that was in two thousand ten, and we got about ten point seven million dollars and we were able to knock out some projects pretty quickly for the reconstructs. I'd like to distinguish though, if I could, just a reminder on overlays versus reconstructs. Overlay is a maintenance function where we would scrape off or mill two, two and a half inches and then replace the surface. So that's done with our operational dollars, the HERF and the sales tax. The capital end is a full removal, we use capital dollars for, the reconstructs. And so that's, that, we need to do those when the asphalt deteriorates beyond a certain point and we've met the end of the useful life. And the reconstructs cost almost three times as much as a, an overlay. So let me show you...
And have we done any of those since the, we crammed a bunch of those projects into the stimulus monies, so have we done any in the last two year, reconstructs in the last two, three years?
Mayor, that's what's going on at, at University and Dobson, and then as part of some of these other arterial...
Now, are we doing that because of that or because we're basically putting pipes and everything in there? Do we, we just, we just piggyback that? Is that why we're doing it there?
Mayor, that was originally going to be a Prop four hundred project, and when we looked at that one, there was a lot of impacts to properties and we decided that, and the street needed to be replaced anyway, so we didn't do capacity improvements, more lanes. We just replaced the street and we coordinated with our utilities to do that work at the same time.
Yeah, I, okay, because I didn't know if that was driven by the utilities and we just figured there was so much, because we tore that street up pretty good and putting multiple new pipes and everything in there. I didn't know whether that was just because the amount of undergrounds we did there causes or if that was coordinated, so thank...
Yeah, that's what's taking longer is because there's an awful lot of work underground and then the reconstruct obviously takes longer than...
I think we're doing gas, water and sewer. I think we're doing about everything.
You're doing everything. Mayor, we are doing everything else. If you remember, University had a pretty good-sized parabolic crown. The old designs used to be roads were paved like that. While we obviously do a different type of design lower the cross-section of the road to do that, all the utilities are in the way. They're too shallow, so it's a combination of project of aging infrastructure along with redesigning the road.
Okay.
So if I can toggle between these maps a little bit, this first map shows our street system as it exists today. So green is good, yellow's fair pavement condition and red is poor. So as we invest in it, you see a change. The ones that aren't colored, the gray, is either, is it private or county maintained? So these are all the city public maintained streets. When you look at the second map, you'll see the colors change. This shows an investment of nine million dollars per year in overlays.
Do we have, who has primary responsibility for baseline? Is that a Gilbert responsibility between Higley and Wrecker?
Yes, sir. They have it all the way from the, what canal is that? East of Lindsay to Power Road. Consolidated Canal to Power Road.
Oh, that's, that's Gilbert's responsibility.
Yes, sir. So this shows these improvements.
If you could drop them a Post-it note or something that... That's how we used to communicate, you know, Post-it notes. I'm sure they know that that isn't the best of conditions.
I'm guessing they have some financial challenge.
All right.
I'd like to point out here, today we're funding about four to five million dollars in overlays. This map, which, and I'm on the second map now, shows nine million. We've been working with the city manager and our budget office, looking at our forecasts. We think in the future, not the next couple of years, but in the future, we can ramp up to nine million dollars, so pretty much doubling what we're doing today, and that's the change. So let me go back to the first slides showing conditions today. You'll see a lot of red, or you might be toggling yourself. And then as we go to the nine million dollar per year investment, just for overlays, not reconstructs, you see a significant change. The third map is a little harder, a little more subtle because they're thin lines. This is showing the changes on the arterials and this adds in eight million dollars a year for five years for arterial reconstructs. And so as you toggle between them, you can see the change. Even though you can't, it's hard to see those thin lines for the arterials, what that does...
It looks like Southern and Stapley are our two, it looks like Southern is probably the...
Yeah, and there's some overlap there, Mayor, because we, those are the two RTP, Regional Transportation Plan projects. So they would get done with that project, but if we elected not to construct, we have some work to do there anyway. So what we're hoping to do is be able to get that and, you know, consider a bond election sometime in the future, fund those two projects for the balance that's not funded with the regional, with the Prop four hundred. And that's another thing with these RTP projects, there's a lot of pavement work that goes into that. So we, some of it's an overlay, some of it's reconstructs. So that, that helps us in our system to take care of those problems. But we either need at those two locations a reconstruct project or to move forward with the capacity improvements, which will include reconstruction of the asphalt.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Summers?
Mr. Brady perhaps would be the one I would direct us to. This wouldn't be an urgency right now, but looking at all this gray area that's within the county, I think it would behoove us in the near future to get an accounting of the pavement conditions for all of the public streets that are within the Mesa planning area. At some point, we're going to be discussing annexations in future councils of these areas. It'd be good to know what we're getting into. It'd also be good to know how much infrastructure cost it's going to take to bring some of these area up to a minimum standard. And I know that the fire department's going to be interested in knowing that if we ever do have to extend service out there, that they're not going to be able to, some of these roads just aren't going to be able to support the apparatus. So if at some point we could get an idea of what the condition of the county roads are, that'd be a good project.
That's an interesting, because I don't know that we, when we look at individual annexation cases, that doesn't seem to be a major point that we look at.
We do get a, we do get input from all the various city departments.
Yeah, we get input.
We do get, we do get input from all the various city departments, and I think transportation is one of them.
I mean, but I guess the question is, and this, I mean, this calls and begs the question as to, we think about public safety and that type of thing, but we could be, if we annex large chunks of this, we could be taking on huge, huge, huge obligations as far as street maintenance, and yet the reality is, in those county islands, our revenue increase is virtually nil.
Yes.
Because they're already shopping, most of the commercial areas are in the city, and so we're, we're taking on a huge responsibility without any corresponding revenue. You know, I would think that that probably needs to be, and then this is something for the, what do we call that committee now?
Tick.
Is it still called the...
Traffic Architecture.
Traffic Architecture? I know we've been wrestling with annexation, and the councils before us did, it's probably something we ought to take, elevate on our priority list, or, because, hadn't even thought of that.
Yeah.
I know we do an assessment, but do we really factor into the both short-term and long-term cost?
And it's not a small project, Mayor, I think they would, they would want to go out and take some core samples of what the roads are, not just a visual, and so, but I know staff...
I don't, I may be wrong on this, but I, I'm not feeling that the county has as aggressive of a street maintenance program as we do.
They do not, and one thing we've done in the past...
Trying to be nice.
One thing we've done...
Let me ask you this, does the county, I mean, now this is an honest question, does the county, as part of their program, do they maintain neighborhood streets? I don't ever recall seeing it. I know they do arterials every once in a while.
Mayor, in fact, it's funny, I was at a Roads and Streets conference just a few weeks ago, and gave a presentation on asset management, pavement management, and the county, my counterpart in the county was there, we share information back and forth, no, their program's different. In fact, City Mesa's got an aggressive program where we are doing some type of treatment every three to five years in neighborhoods and streets. Theirs is a little different approach, we do have that information, in fact, we share that micropaver system that Dan was talking about earlier, is the same system that the county uses, so we just would transfer that data over to ours. And we do provide information when we look at annexations of what it would cost to bring that neighborhood into our system, what it costs to bring it up to our standards. You've got to realize, many of these signs...
Well, let's not even talk about bringing it up to our standards.
Yeah.
I mean, let's talk about streets that are crumbling and that would be brought up to a minimum standard.
Right, and then, so that's, that's an evaluation that the council does have to make, but we do share that information back and forth, and we do have different process and different cycles of how we do our maintenance in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, there's someplace in the county where they don't care if a paved street reverts back to a dirt path.
Yeah.
You know, that's an accomplishment, so...
Something that could be considered, Mayor, is, and we've done this on some smaller projects, you know, never in an entire neighborhood, but you could require the county to bring it up to some minimal standard before we even agree to annex.
Well, but how do we, I mean, how, what kind of leverage do we have with the county? If they require, we can ask them.
Yeah, there's a benefit to the county, because they give, they, they're free of maintenance forever.
I mean, I can see this as an ongoing, as an ongoing issue, as more and more people want to annex in because their septic systems are failing and those kind of things, it's going to be driven by that. I don't think people are just coming because they want to be in the city, generally it's because they have a, it's either water or sewer, they have that need. And we want to come, if we want them to come in, or we want to allow them to come in, and then we hit them with, oh, by the way, your neighborhood streets have to be brought up to standard, the county's going to say, no, they don't have the budget to do it, if they have the budget, they'd be doing it. Okay, that's just, I think that's something to put on the list for another, as we, as we review our, our policy on annexations, it's something we've got to discuss, and it may even be something we may want to sit down with the county on and talk about a long-term plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, and council members, another challenge related to that, particularly in that northeast area, a lot of those lots were built on years ago before the county had the standards they have today, and there aren't paved roads, there's, it is just dirt. Some cases, we found, there isn't even a right-of-way. Neighbors are traveling across the private property of their neighbors to access their property, so there's a whole host of issues, particularly in that northeast area.
You know, I think a little, little lesson, in Arizona, counties are basically precluded from acting like cities. I mean, counties are not supposed to provide municipal services, and we, we talked about how people go into the county so they don't have to live up to standards, well, in reality, since counties are not home rule, they're not really set up to be cities, they're set up to provide very, very basic services, and that primarily is in height, or in height and health, and public safety, you know, sheriff, and jails, and courts. And so I think for us to expect the county to provide our level of services is really naive in the sense that, you know, except for Pima County, which acts like a city down in Tucson, there's no other county that has ever, ever been expected to, or has offered to provide those kind of services. So even Maricopa County is playing catch-up, because they, usually when things got developed, they would automatically go into a city, and we have a huge section of our city that that didn't happen. But it didn't happen in an era, it didn't happen also in an era in which the county didn't have standards, so it's not shocking that it developed in that way, okay? All right, sorry to get off subject, but...
That's fine. Here's just a couple of examples of continuing projects that were started with the 2008 bond election that might continue into the future, and the first one there is Fiesta District Improvement. So this, the project that's going to get underway here goes roughly between, on Southern, between Alma School and Dobson, a little short of Dobson. This project would continue the southern portion out to west city limits and then include Dobson as well. Question, Mayor? Okay. Then we have some addition, some new projects. Here's one that was brought up in the presentation by the Phoenix Mesa Gateway staff a couple of weeks ago, this is preparing for the East Side Terminal, so there's some roadway work and traffic improvements would need to take place out there. That would widen and finish Hawes Road basically from the 202 onto the airport property and provide another connecting street out onto Ray. We've had a lot of interest in the last few years to kind of enhance our landscaping along some of the arterial streets, and we thought a project on First Avenue would be a great one as well, with all the new development there, with the senior housing, the Goldwater Library, City Court, it's just a very wide street and it's not particularly attractive, so we thought maybe we could put some enhanced landscaping, maybe some raised medians, just to kind of dress that area up, all the way from perhaps McDonald to the temple, it's a proposed project. Some additional work, the bus pullouts and shelters, storm drain pumps, these internally illuminated street name signs, those would be in place for Mayor, for the power knowledge corridor. We're already starting with that signing, that special color and the branding in the southern part of the city, and that would extend all the way north to McDowell in the future. There'd be additional signing for the Fiesta District projects, and these are the light-up street name signs that I'm talking about. And then downtown, if you've noticed, a lot of those are pretty old, and we'd like to replace some of those as well. One final project on that list is a light rail, pedestrian improvement west of Dobson. Right now, between Dobson and the west city limits, there's no legal crossing point for pedestrians, so we'd like to provide one about at the midway point to get them across legal, so it'd be a signalized crossing down there to aid them. And then my, one of my final slides here is just a list of future projects. We'd love nothing better than to continue with some regular funding for our reconstructs and arterials, there'll be additional work needed near the airport, there'll be additional Prop 400 Regional Transportation Plan projects, and then some of these others that you see here. Second to last bullet is Consolidated Canal, very popular right now, there's a two-mile section that we could not afford lights, we got federal funding, we didn't quite get enough to add lighting, we've heard from a lot of folks, including, and Councilmember Finter as well, or Vice Mayor Finter, excuse me, that...
He's not here today, so we can't, he loses.
We'd like to add some lighting in there in the future as well. So that concludes our presentation, we'd be happy to take any additional questions.
Great. Councilman Richens?
Just a quick comment, talking to people with school, the various school, the school districts and elementary schools and junior highs, there's a real need to, I think, collaborate with Mesa Public Schools to look at some safe routes to school kind of concepts. I know the school that my kids go to, you have Westwood, Emerson, and Carson, all on one block, and for, for about an hour every morning, it's a disaster. Fortunately, all the speeds are slow enough that nobody's getting hurt, but there's lots of near misses, and, and so, you know, I know that that's not a unique situation, there are other situations around the city where you have some unsafe conditions that are ripe for an accident to occur at some point. So I would hope that, as you look at future projects, we might consider some additional pathway or improvements around schools to help traffic flow, maybe some studies to really take a look at that, because I think there's some real latent problems out there that, like, for example, there's a lot of kids that like to ride their bike to school or would like to do so, and we only have a three, a very small three-foot sidewalk, and also has a wall right next to us, there's not a lot of margin for error, and so, you know, just, probably the study would be a best place to start, that kind of looks at traffic conditions around schools, and again, speeds are slow, so, you know, the likelihood is probably lower, but there's still some quality of life and flow issues that we could address. Thanks.
Councilman Summers?
Just to bounce off that, if we're going to do a study about the schools and traffic safety, pedestrian safety, I don't want to just concentrate on public schools, I'd also like us to take a look at the charter schools and the private schools that are providing a important service in our community, because a lot of those are smaller, they attend, many of them I know are along arterial streets, and they have concerns about the safety of their children as well, so if we could include those in any study that we do, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. All right, here are reports from meetings, conferences attended. Councilman Richens?
Wanted to give, on Sunday night, I went to a, excuse me, the Arizona League of Conservation Voters event for Earth Night, and this award was presented to Mayor Smith as a conservation champion, but really it reflects the efforts of the entire city, you know, particularly our Department of Sustainability, and Scott and Donna and all those folks that work in that, and a lot of the council members have championed issues of sustainability, and so I just wanted to make sure this got to the mayor, it's really though, you know, something to, the whole city should be proud of, so, there you go.
And I hope they are, thank you.
My guess mileage will go up.
Oh, my gosh.
Dramatically, just taking that out of my car.
Anyone else? And the reason I couldn't attend that is because I was in Washington DC with a large contingency from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, or GPEC. I had very good three days of meetings back in Washington, I met with Secretary of the Air Force, discussed AZ Labs and going forward, met with the FAA Administrator, Mr. Huerta, talked specifically about Gateway Airport, the expansion there, the contract tower situation, Gateway is a contract tower, it was not on the initial list, talked about, you know, sequestration and how that affects everything, so it was a really good meeting with the administrator. I met with the White House and talked about specifically, oh, the White House came out specifically on the Marketplace Fairness Act and established an administration policy, and that was the day, I believe, the same day as the vote in the Senate, where it was approved by the Senate overwhelmingly, which is, you know, good for us. It opens the door for our ability to collect taxes that are now not being paid on internet sales, and that for a city like Mesa who depends upon sales tax and who has seen an ever-increasing chunk of retail go outside the city, you know, our stores into the internet sales, that's, that bodes well for us. So now we have the administration and the Senate, now we just have to work and get through the House. So thanks to GPEC, Barry Broom and his staff, it was, there were about 70 on the, on the deal, including, I think, 11 mayors from around the valley, a few council members, but several business leaders, so it was a very, very good, very, very good trip, that trip. Okay, anything else? Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor, just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, Councilmember Cavanaugh will be hosting Pancakes and Surfing.
Saturday.
Saturday, did I say tomorrow?
Yeah.
Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to noon at Rhodes Junior High School, and so invite everybody to come out there, it's a great event, a lot of good food, and I think Council is inviting several elected officials from the county and the federal level to be there, and state, so we invite you to be there.
For which part?
Vote.
Surfing or the pancakes?
Vote. You've got to surf before you can eat, so, no. Next day's session will be Thursday, May 2nd, in front of you. Also, council, we wanted to get some direction, we have been made aware that our city magistrate's judges are getting pretty far behind in pay compared to some other communities in the area, there's been some increases. So what we'd like to do, if it's, okay, the council, direction of the council, is to refer that to the judicial review board or committee?
Advisory.
Advisory Board.
Judicial Advisory.
Advisory Board, sorry, and have them maybe do a compensation review, and then bring that report to the council, would that be okay?
Any issues with that? Okay?
All right, thank you.
Go ahead and do that. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Anything else? Ms. Nicholson, any requests to speak from the public?
No requests, ma'am.
A motion adjourned, Councilmember Glover, second from Councilmember Cavanaugh, in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.